It's seven o'clock and I would like to open the meeting, November 24th. Welcome, thank you for coming. Call the meeting to order. If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Kimbenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Fraser?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Protem Campana?
Here.
And Mayor Coine?
Here.
Are there any agenda changes that anyone wishes to make? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
You have to...
Connolly.
Mr. Connolly?
Yes. I move we approve the agenda as published.
Is there support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those please say yes.
Yes.
No, please, all those opposed say no. Okay, the agenda stands as is. I have some announcements. First, I would like to recognize the following people for having served as volunteers on advisory boards and committees. Mike Connolly for the Harbor Committee, Dave Carlson for the Peter White Public Library Board, Peter Fraser for the Prescott Isle Advisory Committee. They all cannot serve on an advisory committee when they're commissioners. And Johnny DePietro, he's a county commissioner now or soon to be, so he cannot serve. Wish to thank them for their service, appreciate it very much. A couple other announcements. There are going to be new garbage bags. And one is going to be a 30-gallon garbage bag, it's going to cost a pack, I think, a dollar fifty for each, and a 20-gallon. We've been, I've been after the city for maybe 30 years to get smaller garbage bags for single people and they finally weaseled it out of waste management. They're also going to be thicker, in case you haven't noticed, the ones that we were buying are thinner, so they added some millimeter thickness. And they're going to have string closures. The other announcements are the traditional ones of a huge, long list of people, vacancies on boards and commissions. And we just had a work session today at five o'clock to try to figure out how to both make, to solve that problem of vacancies and to make serving on a city commission more pleasant and more responsible and with more direction and more interchange between the two. So, we're going to work on that and probably have some ideas for the next meeting as to how to accomplish that. But there are lots and we'd appreciate anybody who wants to sign up to do so. One final announcement is, the city of Marquette has been recognized by the University of Michigan at their eye lab as a four-star city, which there are 32 state cities that have been recognized like this. And it really is a recognition of the efforts we've made on economic development and quality of life, things like the LDFAs and Northerns and Economy and our Smart Zone. So, this is a real nice award to have and I think it speaks well for administration and the commission for working so hard on getting this excellent award. And I'd like to thank Wendy Larson, who is the manager's executive assistant for going to Ann Arbor to pick the award up, and appreciate her efforts of doing that. Those are all the announcements. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's the Employees' Code Ordinance Number 621. Mr. Clerk, could you read the agenda item, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The city charter enacted in November of 2012 requires updates of various local ordinances to comply with contemporary federal and state laws and regulations. The Employees' Code is required to be updated by January 1st, 2015, and staff has developed an update which complies with human resources laws and implements current merit system standards. At the November 10th, 2014, meeting, the city commission scheduled a public hearing for November 24th, 2014, and requested the city attorney review the political activities section of the proposed ordinance. Staff has traced a substantially similar version of the political activities section of the ordinance back to 1959 and it appears to have been part of the Employees' Code ever since. However, since that time, the Political Activities of Employees Act, MCL 15.401, was passed and now regulates political activities by public employees. In view of this fact and that the regulation of political activity is also covered in the Ethics and Code of Conduct ordinance, it is the city attorney's opinion that the political activities section may be deleted in its entirety from the draft ordinance. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing and upon consideration, adopt Ordinance Number 621 Employee Code with the changes pursuant to the opinion of the city attorney, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing and anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward to the center box there and if you have anything to say. Yes.
Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. Employees' Code 621 Political Activities Section 2-367 reads, "No city official or employee while on duty is permitted to directly or indirectly engage in any form of city political activity." This makes sense while they're on duty, however, other stipulations indicate that they cannot even enjoy freedoms, certain freedoms, when off-duty. The section states it is the intent of the following rules to establish that city officials and city employees must not use the prestige of their city employment on behalf of any political issue, either voluntarily or because of pressure. No city official or employee shall take an active part in any city election or campaign so as to impair his usefulness to the city. This prohibition does not apply to activities which are not part of a city nonpartisan elections for city commissioners. An active part in city elections or campaigns is construed as follows: soliciting or handling any monies that contribute toward the candidacy of any person for city office, transporting or helping to get out the votes at the city election, becoming a candidate for nomination to the office of commissioner, distributing leaflets and the like that is intended to further the candidacy of any person seeking city office, initiating or circulating nominating petitions to the office of commissioner. Nothing in this section shall be construed as prohibiting or preventing a city official or employee from taking legitimate interest as a citizen in his city government." The rules are confusing because taking a legitimate interest in the city government may well involve the banned actions. You're trying to censor their rights as citizens by designing rules that are more indicative of how private corporations protect themselves, not public municipalities that are owned by the people, including our city employees. To impose your proposed rules on top management and department heads may be understandable. What's the harm, though, in allowing lower and mid-level employees to participate? Their inside information and insights are potentially invaluable advice in advance of elections and certain agenda items. A sad point is that in this economy, most prospective employees will agree to sign their rights away as a condition to receive a good job, but this doesn't make censorship right.
Thank you, Mr. Gerto. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Bob Kimbenzie, 306 North Sixth Street, Marquette. At your November 10th City Commission meeting, two weeks ago, the outgoing commissioners to a person and the incoming commissioners to a person all praised the city staff, the city employees. Over the last two or three years, there's been noticeable declining employee morale. The proposed political activities section, as proposed two weeks ago, was intimidating and demeaning to the employees and leaves the door open to further bullying. I highly recommend that you take the attorney's advice and delete the political activities section in its entirety from the ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one further to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commission, what is your pleasure? Mr. Baldini?
Your Honor, I would move that we adopt the ordinance with the deletion of, I believe it's Section 2364, with collective.
Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Baldini, comments?
I think it's based upon our attorney's advice that he suggested we take it out of the local one and that also new language or language, current language, is applicable to the city by the state law. And that really becomes, I suppose, our guiding principle and that's, I think, why we're probably well-served by that.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
I agree. Our attorney has advised that state and federal law supersedes this ordinance. It's our job to clean out ordinances that are obsolete and so I'd like to adopt the code without the political activity, which would be moved anyway.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? I have a question for the city manager. In the original ordinance, did you just put that in or has that been in there for years?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's been the standing rule since about 1959.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just a comment I have, I'd like to appreciate the people bringing the discrepancy to the public and appreciate that effort. Seeing no other further comments, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Public Ordinance 621 Employee Code with the changes pursuant to the opinion of the city attorney, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, that has passed unanimously. Next, I have a presentation, if I could ask Kay Hebel to come to the little box over On behalf of the commission and all the citizens of Marquette, I'd like to present you with this certificate of appreciation for you for the hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. And I'd like to give you a little Marquette button that we ask people who've done a lot for the city to wear proudly. And I want to just make a summary of what someone wrote me, and I think this is very, very nice, and you need to hear how people feel. The staff, the board of directors of the history museum could not be more proud of you, as could the commission and the citizens of Marquette. You've been a wonderful leader for the history center and a visionary for this community. You're truly a role model for public service. For the past 37 years, you have been the driving force behind the County Historical Museum and now the Marquette Regional History Museum. Your career started when you were an extremely young person in 1980. I just put that in, so extremely young. And you now were appointed in 2005 as the executive director of the MRHC. After doing that, you took on the Herculean task of raising $3.7 million for a capital campaign and created a real gem, something that we're very, very proud of in this city. And it's now recognized as a state-of-the-art museum and historical research facility, second to none in the Great Lakes region. So, Kay, on behalf of everyone, thank you very, very much for your efforts, appreciate it. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. This is really, it's been an exciting fall for me. I've received a lifetime achievement award from the Historical Society of Michigan and at first I thought, I'm not really quite ready for a lifetime achievement award because I don't think I'm quite finished yet with everything that I'm doing. But then I started to think about, well, 30, actually it's 35 years, not 37, but 35 years in many people's career constitutes a lifetime achievement in today's world. And so I've come to grips with that. I'm really, really proud of the history center. I think it's a wonderful addition to our community and I feel that our shared past is what connects us as a community. And it's my great privilege to be able to remind us on a regular basis of all of the wonderful people who have come before us, who are here with us now, the events that have come before us and the sacrifices that people have made to bring us to this particular point in time. So we should never take any of that for granted. There's a whole lot of history that comes to this moment tonight. And I'm happy to be here representing that moment in time. And for those of you that haven't come to the history center yet, I hope you will take the opportunity to do that. We're just starting to hit our stride now that we're in the building and we're able to really put our efforts into programming and accomplishing what we can really achieve. So, thank you so very much. On behalf of all the people who helped to make it happen, as someone said, it takes a village to make it happen. It didn't happen just because of me. I have a wonderful staff and board and community support. So, thank you very much, it means a lot to us.
The next item is a proposed resolution regarding microbead products and Great Lakes protection. Natasha Kosch, are you here? Would you come forward?
Hi. Evening, I'm Natasha Kosch from the Superior Watershed Partnership, I'm a program manager there. I'm here tonight to just give you a little bit of background on the resolution before you in hopes that you will pass this tonight. It is essentially a resolution discouraging the use of different kinds of products that contain microbeads. And these are things like exfoliants and facial cleansers that contain the tiny little plastic particles that are not biodegradable, are not caught by our wastewater treatment plant, and is, has become a growing concern in the Great Lakes. They end up going into the lakes, they end up being ingested by fish and other organisms and bioaccumulating over time. One of the things our organization has done in, with this sort of issue is, last spring, we held the first-ever of its kind collection of these kind of products of microbeads. And we'll be hosting a similar collection this coming spring, so we're asking residents to please hang on to their products, stop using them, hang on to them, and then look for our collection coming this spring. I'm essentially here to answer any questions you may have. If you do pass this tonight, you will be one of many communities throughout the Great Lakes that has done this, in addition to the state of Illinois that has passed legislation banning the sale and manufacture of these products. So it's obviously a great issue to our organization and hope you'll consider passing it tonight. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. I'd like to address the city manager and city attorney for a moment. In our, in my agenda packet, I do not have the resolution. Does it, how can we pass a resolution if we don't have a copy of it?
I've not seen it, so I don't know the answer would be.
We, I have not seen the final version.
Natasha, I think it would be prudent for us to not vote on something that we don't have, so...
Right, you were supposed to have it. I do have one copy.
Well, we need to have it before, so...
Yeah, I understand.
I wanted to give you the great opportunity to come back at our next meeting in December when we have the proposal and we'll put it on the agenda and deal with it.
That sounds good. Sorry for that, you should have had it tonight, something must have happened, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming and you get to go home early now, so...
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
As a consumer, how do I know the products I'm considering would have microbeads or not?
They literally say them on the front. It'll say, "contains microbeads."
On the front or the back?
On the front, yep. And you can actually look in the ingredients, there's several different kinds of natural exfoliants, like they'll use sand or sugar, I've seen seaweed. But typically it'll say it on the front, "contains the, you know, exfoliant microbead," and it'll say it on the back that they contain the plastic beads.
They don't use a lot of exfoliants on...
Well, you know.
Would it be in things like laundry detergent and things like that?
From what we've found, it's primarily in facial cleansers and exfoliants. So that's, you know, Neutrogena makes a couple different ones, Vino, I believe, does too. And I think it's, you know, the long-term goal of these companies, to phase these out over time, but we want to, you know, see the city take action now. So, obviously not now, in two weeks, but yeah.
Yes.
Another question, are the manufacturers of these products going to continue to make these or are they going to maybe make an effort to stop making the product?
Yeah, that's the goal. I mean, at least we've heard from a few of the different companies that they're trying to phase it out, especially because there's, at least Illinois, and I believe Washington and California have completely banned them. So, it's, they're very aware that, you know, this is an issue and that they need to take action, so...
Any other questions? Thank you for coming and we'll see you next meeting.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Facility Advisory Board presentation by Kirk Page. Kirk, thank you for coming tonight and...
Yeah, thanks for the invite. I'm Kirk Page, I'm the chairperson of the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Facility Advisory Board. And do I have to do something to put this on the screen? Here's a bird's-eye view of the treatment plant. The advisory board is composed of five members. Three are representing the city of Marquette and one each from Chocley and Marquette Townships. And those three communities are the owners of the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment You'll notice that there's one vacant city position right now and a second city position is expiring the end of the year, so hopefully you'll have reappointments pretty soon here. We meet once a month, the third Thursday, and we meet at the wastewater treatment plant in the conference room. It's a public meeting, everyone's welcome. Obviously, we don't get a lot of attendance, so if anyone wants to learn more about the treatment facility, certainly we'd be happy to have you attend the meeting. The Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Facility Advisory Board was established by an intergovernment agreement in 1977 on April 19th in accordance with Act 135, Public Act 1951. That was the year that the city of Marquette, who had operated a primary treatment facility since the early 1950s, decided they wanted to upgrade their plant to secondary treatment. Federal money was becoming available as a result of the Clean Water Act. And Marquette Township and Chocley Township were desirous of joining in that effort. And so as a, one of the requirements of receiving this federal money was to have this in our local agreement. Under that agreement, the city of Marquette is the operator of the plant. And the advisory board has a few responsibilities. One is to recommend rules and regulations regarding the facility operation, and another is to allocate and assign fixed demand costs based on ownership. The city of Marquette owns 85%, Marquette Township 10%, and Chocley Township 5%. We also allocate and assign operational maintenance costs, and that's based on the actual measured plant influence. We also make recommendations regarding the proposed operating budget for the, for the Some of our recent accomplishments are the, since we completed the biosolid storage facility in 2012, we've opened up some additional options for the post-treatment handling of biosolids. These include composting, reclamation, agricultural and brownfield remediation. We believe we've achieved sustainable regulatory compliance and stabilized rates for wastewater services, reduced biosolids disposal costs, and stabilized process control for MDEQ compliance. We had a second upgrade five or six years ago and we switched from a rotating biological disc treatment to activated sludge. And of course during this process of construction, the plant had to continue to operate. And when it's finally completed and the startup was begun, the, obviously there were some issues and they've pretty much been ironed out now. We also received some additional revenues, not only from each other but from outside sources, primarily trucked industrial waste. Last year we got over $47,000. We recently were issued a new five-year discharge permit. And we've also completed a network segmentation project to separate the city network to address security and reliability issues. And some of our goals for the upcoming year are to develop a long-term biosolids management plan to reduce biosolids handling costs and improve operational efficiency. We'd also like to pursue more land application sites, including brownfield reclamation and agricultural land. And also we're looking at a compost partnership with the Marquette Solid Waste Management Authority. And we're hoping to maintain the current rates for wastewater services, continue to seek additional grant funding opportunities, formalize standard operational procedures, develop and implement a formal asset management program per new MDEQ requirements, and develop a formal grease trap inspection and enforcement program with Marquette and Chocley Townships. Each community has their own program right now, but we're hoping to consolidate our efforts, sanitize our procedures, and hopefully able to offer each other support. Some of the issues we have are, as I mentioned, a couple of board vacancies are coming up. We still occasionally have silver compliance issues. It's not very often, but it does happen. The staff has pretty much tracked down the source of silver, which is some, some of the old-style film development processes still exist around the city. There used to be contractors that would collect the waste, but they have discontinued that practice, so we're working with those local businesses to overcome that, that problem. Also, we don't have, we don't feel we have treatment plant security issues, but as a result of some things that have happened recently in the area, we are just going to, you know, review our security plans. Here are some factoids for you, listing of the staff, five operators, one lab tech, one maintenance mechanic and a supervisor. And everyone is cross-trained to perform every job. And there's a recent administrative assistant added. And I'd like to just make a comment about the staff. As an advisory board, we advise and we think we do a pretty good job, but obviously these people who run the plant are the people that really get things done. 24/7, they deal with whatever comes into the plant. And... And sometimes there's some pretty awful stuff, sometimes there are extremely large loads. So they're pretty much the unsung heroes of modern civilization, in my opinion, and kind of the last barrier, the last protection against pollution of Lake Superior. Also, here's a list of some recent years' total flows that have been treated. It's been fairly stable. Even though there's growth, you know, people are using less and less water, so it's fairly stable. That actually creates some operational issues with smaller flows. And kind of related, it also creates issues in the collection system as well. This is an inside-eye view of the end of the pipe, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Don't, don't run off.
Okay.
Any questions you have for Kirk? Commissioner Kimpenzi?
Just a few questions. When you talk about the silver compliance, is that people that are developing?
No, these are commercial developers.
Developers, okay.
I mean, there may be some individual, but, you know, obviously we can't, you know, inspect every single residence in, in the city.
Okay.
But it's primarily going to be the commercial.
Okay.
And there've only been, you know, two or three identified so far. Most everybody has switched to, you know, the digital process.
Right, okay. I guess the other comment I have, thank you for serving, and certainly everyone else on it, but right before this meeting, we had a meeting on our committees and all of our vacancies, and noting that we do have quite a few vacancies, and this one having two is pretty, pretty important too. So, one of the things we talked about in our work session was the type of people we would need in the community to step up and volunteer, and I'm just thinking of a few, and maybe if there are any others, but civil engineers that deal with water flow, environmental engineers, people that work for nonprofits that deal with water, natural resources, just people concerned about the Great Lakes policy and environment. If any of these interest you, you might not think of a wastewater treatment plant as something exciting, you know, committee to be on, but when you look at the impacts that you showed in your PowerPoint, it's, it's pretty obvious that it does affect all of us. So I would guess I would urge community members that are watching, if you do have an interest in any of those things or anything else that has to do with water, we need you. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Commissioner Kimpenzi. I echo those remarks. You know, every year, we tour the facility, and it's just very impressive. I really think that it's a very nice facility. You're, you're right, I think the staff does an excellent job, and your advisory board does an excellent job too. And I think you should extend our appreciation for that. It's very, very well-run, and it's obviously extremely important, because if it doesn't work, we're in for trouble. Big crime.
Right. And actually, I forgot, I should mention, you know, the staff is under the supervision of Mark O'Neill and the direction of Kirk Goodman, so.
Well, you do really a good job, and the two vacancies are critical. We, we really need, and I think the suggestions as to the type of person is, I hope people would think about it and, and step up, and, very much appreciate it. I have a question. The big sewer pipe that we had to put in during the summer over the Carp River, is that functioning now and working and?
Yes, it is. That was a replacement of an old, an old pipe.
But much bigger, I think.
I'm not sure if the size was changed or not.
Okay.
It was a large pipe to start with.
Yeah, okay.
There are actually two, two mains there.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you again for your presentation, and I get forward to visiting you later this year, okay? Alrighty. The next item is the proclamation. Mr. Clerk, could you read the proclamation on Small Business Saturday?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas the government of Marquette, Michigan celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99% of American employer firms, create more than 2/3 of the net new jobs, and generate 46% of the private gross domestic product. And whereas small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States, and whereas 89% of the consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and whereas 93% of the consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community, and whereas Marquette, Michigan supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday-after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, J. Michael Koin, do hereby proclaim November 29th, 2014, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year, dated this 24th day of November, 2014, and sign, J. Michael Koin, Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, we'll move on to boards and committees. If I could ask Jess Jones and Mike Connolly to come up to the bias here. Jess, on behalf of the commission, we want to welcome you to serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. You are a perfect example of a person who gets involved in one committee and then moves on to the other, and we really appreciate you doing it, and talk to your friends, okay? All right, thank you. Anything you would like to say? No? Okay. And Mike, thank you for serving so well on the Harbor Advisory Committee, and we are blessed by your service there, and we're also happy to have you here. So you get a pin and a t-shirt, okay? There's the pin and a t-shirt. And, and a certificate.
And a certificate, thank you.
Yes, and an opportunity to speak.
I would, a couple of thank yous. I'd like to thank my fellow committee members who worked along, furthering the cause of our beautiful waterfront, and our staff people, Carl, John, and recently Andrew, who, without whose help we couldn't function. So thanks to all those people, and thanks to the commission for putting up with us.
Next, our appointments, two committees. One would be Robert Barabee to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending February 1st, 2016. The other is Terry Shipansky to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, a term ending February 1st, 2015, and Paul Schlegel, the Planning Commission Representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals, for a term ending February 15th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve those appointments? Mayor Protem Campana.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appointments of those three individuals to the boards named.
Commissioner Connolly?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, now is the time for public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. If you wish to reserve time for another agenda item, please come forward and tell us, so we'll put your name down on that. The three-minute time period will start like a traffic light. When you start speaking, it'll be green. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will go on, and it'll start blinking in 30 seconds, and then when your three minutes is up, the red light will go on. So please feel free to come forward and state your name and place of residence.
I am the Executive Director for the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, and I'm here for actually several items today on the agenda. One being, I'm here to answer any questions you have on Agenda Item 14-609, and also on the consent agenda. I know that, that we'll probably go right through, but should you have any questions about the process on 14-610? And then, I would also like to express my appreciation personally, and appreciation of the Downtown Development Authority and our downtown businesses for recognizing the importance of our small businesses and our local businesses downtown, and in our community. I'd like to remind everyone that shopping downtown really helps keep our downtown revitalized, it keeps it vital, it keeps it active, and I know that's important to our community. And then it also retains our uniqueness. There's no one, there's no other town like downtown Marquette. Our local businesses are invested in our community, and they support our community through contributions to charities, to our schools, to events, and when you shop in a local business, you are helping to support entrepreneurship. I know the ordinance, or the proclamation talked about employees and small businesses, employing a large number of employees. Our downtown district employs over 2,000 employees in our city, and that's important to the economic growth. So I would just like to also just remind everyone that it's important that we do support our local businesses. For every dollar that is spent in a local-owned business, 68 cents comes back into our community. And that is important. There is, if you shop the internet, zero comes back, I'd like to remind you of that, and 40 cents comes back if you shop a big box. So shop local, shop smart. And I'm also going to share on Saturday all our local businesses. We'll have these wonderful shop local bags. So I have brought one for every one of you. I want you to take these nice big bags, and I want them, I want you to fill them up with local products. So I've brought one for everyone, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. You can give those to the clerk.
I leave these for you.
You can leave them with Dave there, the clerk.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Make sure you pack them up.
Okay. Any further people wishing to come forward?
Thanks, Jeff Barito, 350 East Ridge Marquette, to speak on Item 10. These are my opinions. A grassroots effort is underway to revoke the rowing club's 25-year lease by forcing a referendum to let the voters decide. Those who are interested, please refer to a new website called savefounderslanding.com. Those who wish to help circulate petitions, please call Michael at 226-9620. November 10th, NEMI said the transfer of the Coast Guard parcel is close. Only the required public process remains. If that's all that's required is a public process, where is it on tonight's agenda? Will this occur within our lifetimes? Even if it were on tonight's agenda, you're too late. Do you recall Tourville showing us a map on September 24, 2007, of what we stood to gain versus lose? Seven years and counting, we've given up prime lakeshore for nothing in return but gates and no trespassing signs. November 10th, Stonehouse said the board members do the best they can for our citizens. He made this claim in light of the Coast Guard parcel, the mishandled boathouse, the theft of closing comment, and rash action on the hospital with no ideas of where to cite the service center or how to reuse the existing facility. Five of you took oaths November 10th, vowing to support federal, state, and local constitutions, yet right off, Kimpenzi accused the board of poor leadership and violations. She said, "At this position, we're elected by the people, there who we're working for," end quote. You're not working for us by stealing our comment time to avoid due embarrassment for yourselves. When checkmated, you not only answered with silence, but you stole our time to silence us. You're urged to motion during your closing comments to reinstate the three-minute closing comment, as well as a system to address viable public input in an unbiased fashion. Focus on confronting issues, not just on getting through the moment. New members are urged not to let senior members mentor them, as this perpetuates a well-documented failed mentality. You're elected based on your individual attributes, expected to hit the ground running and act in the majority interest without the influence of so-called mentors. Mentorship is unhealthful on a community, on a municipal board. In Koin's closing comment November 10th, he called himself an equal person. In fairness to him, now that he's on top, maybe he'll make good on this word. He's due a fair chance, yet this isn't how some have perceived him to date, except on the truck route. So for the record, this equality claim will be scrutinized with a fine-toothed comb concerning preferential treatment and the impartial administration of due public process. Consider those who sacrifice earnings to move here for the extreme beauty and because every place else this size is worsely exploited. Let us not encourage such exploitation and ensuing crime to migrate this way.
Bob Kimpenzi, 306 North Sixth Street. It's been about a month and a half since we heard the Brownfield presentation and how that was going to work into the siting of the new hospital. And at the time, a number of the commissioners agreed that we need to hold some citizen forums on this whole process and project, and I think we need to start talking about that and getting things going. This is an awful big project, and there's an awful lot of things to do, and I don't know that it's falling into place very fast, so we haven't even talked about it yet. We need to do that.
Good evening, here in Malanquinian 8 Marquette Drive. Welcome, new commissioners. It's a pleasure to see new faces. Also welcome to the usual criticism that you may or may not receive as the years go along here or the year goes along. But I want to compliment the city staff and all the utility people doing our incredible storm that we had. Streets were plowed, our electricity worked really well, our sewage system worked, our water came into our homes. Everything worked really, really fabulously in our community with such a fabulous staff that the city has in our community. And so it's an incredible, incredible place to live. One short note, feel free to have open communication with us, being the landfill authority. We respect your opinion, and we would like to work with you on the future concerns that we both have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brad Newman. I live at 339 East Arch Street here in Marquette. I'm the Chair of the Marquette Bike Ability Committee, a group of organizations and volunteers committed to making Marquette safer and more welcoming to bicyclists of all abilities to accomplish everyday tasks such as running errands and commuting to worker school. In the spring of 2014, the Bike Ability Committee notified the city commission that we were successful in our bid to achieve the Silver Bicycle Friendly Community Status. With the award, Marquette joins just two other Michigan cities with silver designations in the state. No other Michigan communities have achieved gold or platinum. Besides the award, the League of American Bicyclists also presented our committee with a feedback document that outlines a number of recommendations to help further promote bicycling in Marquette. I have copies of the document that I'll leave with the clerk, and I encourage you to review the document at a later time. Some of the key recommendations include: increase the amount of high-quality bike parking at popular destinations throughout the community; ensure smooth transitions for bicyclists between local and regional trail networks and the street network; provide protected bike infrastructure, such as buffered bike lanes on streets with posted speeds at 35 or greater; and appoint a staff member to serve as a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, just to name a few of the recommendations. Now, not all the recommendations in the document are realistic in the near term. For instance, there's a suggestion to require large employers to provide shower and locker facilities. But overall, this document can serve as a work plan for improving infrastructure, awareness, and safety over the coming years. To that end, I would like to ask the commission to consider formalizing some of the efforts of the Bike Ability Committee by expanding the role of city staff and committees working on this aspect of community development. on this aspect of community development. I believe we can do it in a way that minimizes demands on staff while taking advantage of the economic development potential that comes with being a walkable, bikeable, cool city in today's new economy. I'd like the Commission to consider establishing a Complete Streets Committee that's focused on improving bikeability and walkability of all ages and abilities, whether it's the elderly needing to access transit, children walking to school, or adults biking to college, work, or recreational destinations. As you know, Complete Streets is a requirement of all transportation planning, and since 2011, the city has supported it with an adopted resolution. So I understand you're looking at committees, and I think this is an opportunity, as you're reworking committees, to help to make bicycling and walking even more accessible here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Mike Walker. I live at 345 Alger Street, and I just, I'm sorry, I'm new at this. I want to propose the idea that the city adopt an ordinance that allows mobile food trucks in Marquette. I own and operate Dia de los Tacos, and currently, we operate only on personal or private property. And we would like to see more food trucks in town and have them operate on city property. I have a copy of the Kalamazoo ordinance, which seems agreeable to me, but that's all I've got for now.
Would you like to give that to the clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to speak or reserve time? Seeing no one else, we'll close this portion and move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move we can approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Connolly?
I second the motion.
All right. Commissioner Reynolds, any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Connolly?
None.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? That motion carries. Next is new business. Next is We Energy Tax Tribunal Cost Sharing Agreement. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the agenda item, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The city is currently involved in a Michigan Tax Tribunal, or MTT, dispute with We Energies. We is the largest taxpayer in the city, and because the MTT case could have a significant impact on several taxing jurisdictions, a joint defense agreement is being considered to be by the following public entities: the City of Marquette, Marquette County, Marquette Area Public Schools, Marquette Alger Regional Education Service Agency, the Marquette County District Library, and the State of Michigan. At its June 9, 2014, regular meeting, the City Commission authorized the law firm of Bloom Sluggett Morgan, P.C., to be retained to represent the city in the MTT case, and to have staff pursue the cost-sharing agreement with other taxing jurisdictions that could be impacted. The purpose of entering into such an agreement is to assist in the costs of defending the dispute that has been filed with the MTT. The terms of the cost-sharing are included in the attached tax tribunal and appeal joint defense agreement, and will be finalized once all potential entities have been approved. Fiscal effect, the city shall pay the legal fees from the 1% administrative fee, and then bill each member of the agreement their proportionate share once the cost of the 1% administration fee is expended. Recommendation: approve and authorize the city manager to sign the tax tribunal and appeal joint defense agreement, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Verito, you wish to speak on this matter?
Thank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge Marquette. These are my opinions. Your agenda supplement boasts that We Energies is the highest taxpayer in the City of Marquette. Just the fact that a tax tribunal cost-sharing item appears on tonight's agenda is to legitimize that monstrosity on our lakeshore. To help with the funding, why not sell off a few generators that are no longer needed and reduce the footprint of this eyesore, which negatively impacts our adjacent showcase park? Your supplement dares to mention the city's highest taxpayer without also including the pricelessness of what the plant takes from us. Instead of encouraging its perpetuation-as-is, which this agenda item facilitates, you're asked to discuss its downsizing, since the full capacity is no longer needed now or in the foreseeable future. By all means, retain ample capacity to power the county, as well as the city's emergency power needs should our municipal plant fail.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Baldini?
I move we authorize the city manager to sign the tax tribunal and appeal joint defense.
Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
Support.
Commissioner Baldini, any comments?
I think that the motion by the clerk, or not the motion, but the description by the clerk, describes the importance of this and the significance, and also, this has been an issue that has been around for I don't know how many months now, and probably will continue, and so it's important that we be part of this as a joint operation and joint legal action.
Mayor Protem Campana, any comments?
As Commissioner Baldini says, this is a situation that's going to affect many jurisdictions, and it's very important that we pursue it and keep with it. So yes, we should do this.
Any further comments from Commissioner Campenzi?
I have a few questions. I guess on the partnership side of it, our public schools are funded in a way that they'll be reimbursed regardless of what comes out of this tax tribunal. Yet they're the highest percentage payer on here. Only two of those, I guess there are six partners total, have signed. What does that mean, I guess? No, they haven't.
Who do you want to address?
Yeah, sure. The city attorney is fine.
Mr. Van Corvering, who put this agreement together and represents the city in this tax tribunal matter, and I would remind you that the tax tribunal case is filed against the city of Marquette only. Marquette County has stepped up to assist in the defense of this lawsuit to the 228% of the cost in the sharing agreement. And Marissa has also stepped up, I think it's 8.2 and up to $75,000. So this is money that we would normally have to spend on our own to defend this case. So we've been very lucky. But what Mr. Van Corvering did is he included all the other tax recipient entities, in the event he can get them on board. There's no guarantee that that will happen, but he wanted to leave that as a possibility, and that's why he drafted the agreement the way he did. As it stands now, we would pay 63.8% of this defense, the county, like I said, 28% in the balance to Marissa. If we can get other entities to come in, then that percentage will go down accordingly. But this is really a good news story for the City of Marquette, because as you know, in most of these tax tribunal cases, we fund them solely from our own general funding. So this is really a good thing that happened.
Can I ask you one more question? That is, Marissa would stand to lose money from this, correct?
Yes, all of these entities would stand to lose money from it, and that's why we've got them in.
So even the public schools with her?
Well, you're right. I think the public schools are reimbursed, at least that's the formula now. Who knows what will happen a year from now? We know the Attorney General hasn't indicated whether they're going to participate yet, but they've also entered the fray. You've read in the paper. So maybe we'll get some benefit from that alone. If not, their money will get their help in that regard. So it's really working out to the advantage of the city at this point.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, I'm going to call the question then. All those in favor of the motion approving and authorizing the city manager to sign the tax tribunal appeal joint defense agreement, please say yes.
Yes.
If all opposed, say no. That motion passes unanimously. And next, the last agenda item is the Community Development Block Grant Delft Theater Project Developer Agreement. Could you please read the agenda item, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The City of Marquette received a grant agreement dated October 14, 2014, for a community development block grant in the amount of $481,000 from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for the Delft Theater Improvement Project. The project is expected to create 25 new jobs by September 30, 2016, with at least 51% of the new jobs to be held by low- and moderate-income individuals. A development agreement between WRV LLC II and the City of Marquette to ensure that the developer constructs and completes the project and complies with the job creation requirements of the grant is recommended by the grantor. Fiscal effect: none by this action. Recommendation: approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreement between WRV LLC II and the City of Marquette for the Delft Theater Improvement Project, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Anna, you wanted to speak on this or be available for questions?
Do you have any questions? I'm here to be any clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there a motion on this matter? Commissioner Campana?
I move that we approve the Community Development Block Grant Agreement between WRV LLC II and the City of Marquette for the Delft Theater Improvement Project.
Support.
Commissioner Campana, any comments?
This is a good opportunity to help the downtown. I can't see anything negative about it. It's going to create jobs, and an exciting place to be, something more unique for the City of Marquette. So I would approve this. Thank you.
I concur with that, and also, keeping with Ms. Lang's comments earlier about exciting downtown, this is a building that has been vacant. Somebody has now come along with an idea, and with everything else that's going to be going on, I think it's pretty exciting. So I think it's a win-win for us.
Any other comments? Okay, just a comment, I think I said this once before, on the negotiations to try to get Marquette General or Duke Life Point to look at the Roundhouse site. We took them, walked them around, and then took them to lunch, to Donker's. And they came back, and they said, hmm, this is pretty convenient. And then we took them to dinner at Elizabeth's, and they were like, double, hmm. And I think that, along with all the tax advantages they got from the Brownfield, was a real thing to turn them around, and it really is an exciting thing for downtown. Okay. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the Community Development Block Grant Agreement between WRV LLC II and the City of Marquette for the Delft Theater Improvement Project, please say yes.
Yes.
If all opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Now is the time for comments from the city commissioners. Commissioner Campenzi, want to go first?
Sure, I'll keep it brief. I just also like to give my thanks to everyone that's been keeping our community safe with the early arrival of winter: public works, city police, city fire, and even our county road commission. I know at times, we can be very harsh on, it's not done fast enough, it's not done good enough. But it certainly takes a lot of manpower when you get the heavy wet snow early in the year. It certainly puts all of us back, and with funding being limited all the way around, if you see those guys on the street, please thank them and tell them they did a good job, because actually, the further out you get from the city, the worse it gets. So actually, we're doing okay. So I'd just like to thank them. Also, one comment about the committees. Mr. Newman brought up the Bike Ability, Walk Ability Committee, and one thing we're trying to do is not create more committees, but actually see where they might overlap, how they can work together, how an advisory, maybe more of an ad hoc, can work with our planning commissioners as they plan our streets, as they plan our sidewalks, they go through our capital improvement projects, so that the things that you want in there can be heard loud and clear and actually implemented that way, rather than creating another committee that might be competing with doing the same type of work. So I think it's great. I think it's one thing our community thrives on, and I do think there's a way to get those goals that you have into our planning commissioners' hands and working with them. And one last thing, we do have three vacancies if either of you are interested on our planning commission. So that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
No real comments, other than that I think we're in for another doozy of a winner. So I think our city's prepared for, if we went through last year, anything like last year, I think they're prepared and they're going to do okay. So other than that, look forward to doing all my funding commission work, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Campana?
I would like to say that this Saturday is a support small business, and it's important that people realize that they should, you know, support small businesses. Things to remember is that when you shop in a small business, the money stays in the community. It does not leave, does not go to corporate headquarters somewhere. Small businesses tend to be unique, and it keeps uniqueness to the community. People like to shop in interesting places, and Marquette is good for that. The last point on that is, we're led to believe that prices in these small places may not be as good as the big boxes, but that is not always true. If you look around, you should compare. I mean, I fought that problem for years, because I own a small business, and I can tell you that prices are not always higher in a small business. So, you know, look around and give them a chance, and just remember that money stays here. Second thing, the recent storm, yes, our city staff did real well removing the snow. They're very good. If you've ever lived anywhere else, you'll appreciate what they do here. I mean, in 24 hours, your road is clear, and no matter where you live in the city. So they're to be commended. Lastly, I got a public announcement. The Children's Museum is having a celebrity art auction Thursday, December 4, starting at 5:30. There are two commissioners on this staff that are going to be contributing. One is Sarah Reynolds, who's a very gifted and very talented artist, and her piece of work will undoubtedly go for lots of money. And unfortunately, I'm the other one, and I don't expect a lot, but we hope to see a lot of people there. So December 4 at 5:30. Try to be there. Support the Children's Museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds, do you have something nice to say about Commissioner Campenzi's artistic ability?
No, but I don't think anybody should pump me up like that. I feel like it's going to turn out bad now. My only comments this evening are, one, to Mike Walker. He did leave, but I was going to mention to him, he should make an appointment with the city manager, because the last commission that did sit here was in support of developing some kind of taco truck, or not just taco truck, food truck policy, so I think we need to continue to follow that through. And also, to Brad Newman's point, we actually changed about three months ago the mission statement for our Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee to include Complete Streets. Now, the goal is to task them with things to complete such goals, but their mission has been changed to include Complete Streets. So hopefully, throughout this process that we were talking about, and Commissioner Campenzi mentioned, we can take your stuff and intertwine it too with it. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Baldini?
Just ditto to the city crew for the snowstorm, and also, when you leave tonight, as I understand, it's quite slippery out. Be careful.
Commissioner Connolly?
I'll add my thanks to the DPW and to the Police Department that had to close streets, deal with more accidents than they could. They're probably glad that the snow was over, finally, but here it comes again. But thank you for your work. It was two weeks ago, it's easy to forget about it. About the Bike Ability, congratulations on the Silver Award. Let's go for gold. Let's do it together. Marquette really is a walkable, bikeable city. We can work together and make it better. I hope we do. And I would encourage you, there are openings on numerous boards, that's how you can help us work together. Parks and Rec has at least two vacancies. Get a couple of your committee members, come on those committees, give your input that way directly to us. We'll work with you otherwise, but come on into the committees and be a part of that process as well. And I'd like to remind people, Thursday, December 4, is a busy night after we go buy art at the History Museum. It's the night of the holiday parade. So come on down to the Commons and enjoy the... So, come on down to the Commons and enjoy the opening of the holiday festivities. Thank you.
Thank you. To continue picking on you, Brad, you know, Commissioner Reynolds' comment about the parking advisory committee, that is also a really important place where you could begin to have an impact. So, if your committee has varied people on it, a bunch of you should join a couple of these committees, and you will thus have an opportunity for more impact, and we'd welcome you to do that. I have an application here after the meeting if you'd like to fill it out. No pressure, okay? But we'd greatly appreciate your efforts trying to do that, and I think you're hearing good support from the Commission, which is nice. And I also echo the comments about Mike Walker's concerns. We didn't go anywhere with that the last commission, MIT commission, and we ought to pursue that again. I have nothing further. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll keep them quick and brief. Based on some of the past Commission's interest in the DLP project, they were asking me to kind of periodically provide updates, and so I'll do that tonight. We're creating yet a little bit more outreach. We had a speaker tonight ask about when the public process is going to open up, and we're hoping that'll be soon. We released an RFQ today to get a list of all the different prime vendors who might be interested in taking the lead on the service center relocation contract we eventually hope to let. So, that's been released today. We're hoping to have the firms down-selected by the middle of December, at which point we'll hand the down-select group a copy of the RFP, hopefully to bring back before the City Commission in the middle of January. And at that point, it'll be a comprehensive contract, and it'll include all of the potential outreach and engagement as part of that for pulling in all of the community input. And parallel to that, just to give people kind of a sense of what this looked like the last time we moved the service center from Wright Street to Baraga, we were able to find all the old historical files from that and all the different groups that were involved, either in the direct negotiations, very similar to what we've gone through recently, some of the financing decisions, and then how some of the functional requirements in the contracts were let. And so, that's all out on the city website. So, if people are kind of interested in that, it's historically interesting, but it gives folks a sense of the kind of things that bear on the judgment of releasing that RFP and the kind of things that we were looking for, that we might still be looking for moving forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community on Lakeshore Boulevard being closed between Wright Street and Holly. And back in February, we had a presentation from the engineering department on what design options would be available to the city to relocate that stretch of road. I believe it was a few months back, we had, immediately prior to the first winter storm in September, an update from the engineering committee on what the community's final interest was. And the next day, we had this September gale that impacted that stretch of Boulevard and really started creating substantial damage to the armor cladding along the shore. Since then, we had another episode of this in November, and it's gotten to the point where now, not only the cladding along the shoreline has either been degraded or completely diminished to the point where it's not serving its purpose anymore, but the lake now is washing up some of that ongoing effect is having an impact on the surface of the road, the substructure, and all of the utilities under the road. And it's creating a very degraded situation along that stretch that, after further review, the engineering department said it both creates a hazard for public safety as well as the continued use of it could potentially create far more serious problems in terms of what the impact of that could be and the response. So, once that happened, we were in immediate contact with the different emergency response organizations through their federal and state governments. We were in communication with the Army Corps of Engineers, trying to find a way to line up resources that we can use to start addressing that problem. And it's interesting, just for comparison, when, four years ago, we went in with a request when a similar storm broke down some of that same stretch of road, it was about a $2 million problem at the time. We recently, of course, per what you've seen in the past year with the community input, we're now at about $9 million to restore that area of road and do it in a way where not only are we preserving the shoreline the way we'd like to see it, but removing that stretch of infrastructure from further harm. So, it's not something that we're doing frivolously. It's not, by any means, convenient for the community to have to endure closing off Lakeshore. But the thing that concerns us most is we're just at the beginning of this winter season, and we haven't received any of the full impact yet of any further storms or even the typical winter freezing that we'll get from the water now that's flooded through the site and washed down into the substructure. So, we're trying to do it in a prudent way. We know it's not a particularly happy thing for anybody, but again, we're not doing it for anything other than the best motives. And I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Well, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Thank you all for...